Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started with the work session here today. So, we're going to take, just for board members' reference, we're going to try to be done no later than 6:30 today, okay? So, no later than 6:30. So, we need, we'll call this to order, and we need an adoption of the agenda, please.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Motion in a second to adopt the agenda, is there any discussion? For this, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye? All those opposed? Okay, we're going to move to Agenda Item 2.01, which is a presentation on purchasing, and then we'll have some discussion on that here in just a second. Dr. Miller, the floor is yours.
Well, good evening, and thank you for allowing us to present this evening. In a few minutes, Krista Bateglia, our Purchasing Coordinator, is going to present her annual update, and I've asked her this year to include some proposed changes for your consideration and later some discussion. We've been working with Joe Hatley to revise Purchasing Administrator Procedures, DJFAP-1. This procedure entails setting bid thresholds, and we felt it was important to seek guidance from the Board prior to making any revisions. Krista will also reference Board Policy, DGA, Authorized Signatures, which addresses contract thresholds. We know it's important that the Administration provides the Board with all pertinent information needed to make decisions, and it's critical that we remain good stewards of public funds. We ask the Board to consider revisions based on some changes in the purchasing practices and our ability to improve workflow efficiency. Following Krista's presentation, we're happy to answer any questions and take feedback.
Good evening. All right. Sorry, things are sliding. As Dr. Miller pointed out, tonight, we're going to focus on DGA and DJFAP-1. You'll see here a list of all of the Board policies that touch on purchasing. There are quite a few, but we're just going to focus on the two. DJFAP-1, first of all, it gives the definition of the purchasing terms. There's a lot of information in there. It defines the District's Purchasing Officer, provides general guidelines on budget guidelines and district policies. We reserve the right to reject a bid for any reason. That language is in this policy as well. So on and so forth. It also, I'm sorry, I'm reading this here. It also talks about the account coding and approval for budget managers. Obviously, technology is going to be run through the Director of Technology Grants, through the Grant Administrator, construction through Kyle Gurrell, Director of Facilities, and the travel budget through the Business Services Travel Specialist. It defines the timeline for bids and for services for auditing, financial advising, depository, health insurance, general commercial insurance, legal services, purchasing cards, and copiers. It authorizes District staff to purchase through an RFP if we determine that those competitive negotiations are required. It waives the bidding process if it determines that there is only a single source for purchasing. It allows the District to utilize cooperative purchasing when it's a financial advantage, and I'm sure that a lot of you remember that we do bring those cooperative contracts to you, and the list is quite extensive. It defines local purchasing preference guidelines and lists the documents that need to be maintained for each bid. Here you'll see just a small flow chart that has been greatly reduced and abbreviated for the purchasing process. Basically, it will walk you through, you know, the purchasing of goods and services. If it's over a certain dollar amount, if the purchase is over 5,000, you're going to work with purchasing for a bid. If the purchase is a one-time purchase, after you've completed the bidding process, if the answer is no, you're going to create a contract, submit it to the Board for approval. If you approve it, then you purchase the goods and services. If it's not a one-time purchase, then we create a contract. And then you know what happens there. It's added to the list. If it's under 5,000 or over 5,000, there would be a Board's middle packet for it. Some of the definitions that are included in this particular policy that I thought were very important was piggybacking. We use that language a lot, and a lot of people are not familiar with piggybacking. That is when an intergovernmental cooperative purchasing entity has competitively bid something, and they've included language in their bid that states that any other governmental agency can use that same bid and not go out for bidding. We call it piggybacking. We would then contact that firm, get a copy of that contract, make sure that everything has been competitively followed, and it was so according to our guidelines, and then we would contact the vendor to piggyback off of that. Purchasing Cooperative, we talk a lot about that. There are national ones, there are local ones, there's ones that carry just, you know, for certain areas of the country. And we seek those out when we can, and look at those and compare those to make sure, you know, if we can save money by competitively piggybacking off of a national contract, because you're going to get national pricing, then we'll take advantage of that. And sole source, this is probably the one that we struggle with a little bit more than others, because you have to define and you have to do the research to make sure that something is truly a sole source. The definition is it's available only from one vendor. They are the sole manufacturer and/or distributor, and so, you know, we have to look at those very carefully to make sure that they are truly the only manufacturer and the only vendor that provides that certain service or widget, so to speak. Some of the co-ops, like I mentioned, are listed here. This is just an abbreviated list of some that we have either used in the past or are currently using, and you'll see that there are some that, like MoDOT, for instance, Missouri Department of Conservation, MACPP, which is an area bid, I'm sorry, an area purchasing cooperative that we use their joint vehicle bid. That's how we order our facility fleet and some of our other vehicles, like the trucks that, our distribution trucks, come off of that contract. Current bid thresholds. You can see here that we start at $0 to $999. That just requires a couple of quotes. I will note that industry best practice is three quotes, but for something that's small, if you can't find three, we will accept just two on that. $1,000 to $499 for individual items, or $15,000 in aggregate items, that is a quote, and we require three quotes for that. $5,000 to $14,999 is an informal competitive bid. It is unsealed, and again, it's for individual items that are $15,000 to $100,000 in aggregate. And then anything over $15,000, that is a formal competitive bid or RFP, and it is sealed, and it also could be for goods or services. Our proposed threshold, this is where we're proposing that we change this slightly and define them more. We're saying anything from $0 to $1,000 is considered a micro purchase. It's going to require at least two quotes from providers, and staff may obtain those either in person, by reviewing a vendor catalog, fax, email, telephone, or electronically through our IonWave eProcurement system. $1,000 to $24,999, we consider a small purchase, or we're defining it as a small purchase. That would require three quotes, and it would be obtained electronically through our IonWave eProcurement system. The system, you know, we use for our bids. We also use that for contract listings and to keep track of all of those dates, termination dates, and so on and so forth, effective dates, I should say. And it also has the capability of just sending out a blast to vendors for a simple quote. And you can say, "I need this back in 15 minutes," or you can say, "I need this back within 24 hours." You set that information in there, and you start receiving that information just almost automatically, and you can just watch it come in. So, it's really neat. $25,000 to $49,999, we're defining as a mid-sized purchase, and that would be an informal bid through purchasing, and that would also be solicited through our electronic bidding system. And then $50,000 and up, we're defining as large purchases. A formal sealed bid or RFP through purchasing would be required, and those bids are also submitted electronically through IonWave eProcurement. Next, we're going to focus on DGA. It is titled Authorized Signatures, and this is the policy that talks about our current procedure for contracts. Anything with a value of 5,000 or less may be approved by the Superintendent or the person designated, which currently I've been signing those as the Coordinator for Purchasing. And that would be provided to the Board for ratification at the next regularly scheduled meeting. Once I sign it, I give it back to that department. They are free to continue with the purchase, and it's added to the list for ratification by the Board. Anything that's over 5,000, it must be approved by a majority of the whole Board. After the Board has approved the contract, then the Board President, Board Secretary, Superintendent, or person expressly designated shall have the authority to sign those contracts on behalf of the District. When it comes to an emergency situation, if the contract is in excess of $5,000, an emergency is defined of, you know, the failure to act immediately on appreciable, immediately shall cause appreciable damage, physical facilities or educational program, or endanger the life or health of students, staff, or community, then that is what we're defining as an emergency situation, and those contracts can be authorized and then sent back through the regularly scheduled meeting for approval at that time. Here again is just a small abbreviated flow chart of our contract system. We receive a contract. If it's over 5,000, it is submitted to purchasing for review. We do any changes that need to be made to Ts and Cs, or any of the privacy policies, student privacy policies. We look at all of that. We make those changes. We work with the vendor to get that done. Once that is done, then it is forwarded to the Administration Office. They add it to the list. The Project Manager then does their Board's middle form and produces any other documentation that they need to, so that it can be presented to you for approval. If it's under 5,000, it is still submitted to purchasing. We take a look at it for the same things, Ts and Cs, student privacy, so on and so forth. We run it through the checks and balances there and make any changes that need to be made. At that point, then it's added to our under 5,000 list. We sign it, or I sign it. We send that back to the Department Project Manager and tell them to go forward with it. And then that list is presented to the Board for ratification at the next meeting. So, that's kind of it condensed in a nutshell, but there's a lot of steps to that process. Our current procedure, this is just it, as I laid it out in the flow chart, are less than 5,000 and are over 5,000 procedures I just covered. And then this is a proposed procedure that we would like you all to consider, raising that threshold from 5,000 to 25,000. Basically, it's the same procedure. However, you will see on the under 25,000 list that that list will expand to include additional information for all of you. It's going to identify whether it is a new contract or a renewal, if there is an increase in the price of that contract, and the departmental budget that it is tied to. Everything else would remain the same, except for the threshold and that additional information, which we will provide for every bid under 25,000. I think this is where you're going to take back over.
Thank you, Krista. You know, in summary, I think one of the things that we, this is a starting discussion point for the Board. We recognize this really has to boil down to comfort level of the Board, where that bid threshold and the contract is. You know, we have discretion as a district, and I'll tell you, after talking with some other districts, there is some variation in how districts handle this, but we thought it was important. We know, a number of years ago, we set that $5,000 threshold. We knew it was low, and we knew we would evaluate that in time. We figured this is a good time for us to start the discussion. We may need to move decisions forward to another day, and we're prepared for that. And, you know, Krista did a nice job of kind of outlining, you know, the micro bids, the small purchases, the mid-sized purchases, and the large purchases. I will tell you, it would be helpful if there's some alignment of when the RFP process starts and when that contract needs to be approved by the Board as an item for decision. I think sometimes there's some internal confusion from staff, and that's one of the things on the backside that Krista does a great job of supporting administrators, but there's confusion. As much clarity as we can provide staff, I think it will help us with our procurement procedures. So, again, the reason for the proposed changes, the addition of IonWave has been a game changer for our district. We think that's a robust system that we could further and maximize even more. Its documentation of bids and quotes will be very helpful. And then again, the internal workflow, how it impacts the Superintendent's Office, Purchasing Office, is something to be considered. So, at this time, we're happy to, you know, entertain any questions you have, and again, this is just a starting point and really kind of open to your thoughts for discussion.
Excuse me, Board Member Dome.
Just your thoughts in why we're changing from 5,000 to 25,000?
Okay. 5,000's a little bit restrictive, and I think there's just a natural flow of just doing operational business, but we're just trying to get a sense today of where the Board really feels like, okay, this is the threshold where we really need to see the contract as more towards an item of decision, and what's that comfort level that can be ratified? Again, different districts handle it differently. There's different thresholds, and so, 5,000 feels low, just operationally.
It does to me as well. Then again, 25 seems a little high, so, thank you.
Some districts have elected to go with 15, so I want to be transparent about that. So, 5,000 works, and we've made it work. It just causes other additional steps for administrators, you know, Board's middle sheets and coordination, so.
If I will add, that $25,000 correlation, if you look at it on the purchasing side as far as where RFPs start, and then correlate that with the contract side, I think we were trying to make those kind of match up or mirror, so that it would be less confusing to staff.
Board Member Fritchy?
Yes, hello. So, in a normal month, when we see our Board Packet, and I just flipped over to our regular session Board Packet to sort of like glance through some of these that are on here tonight that would have been below that 25,000 and would have been above. So, in essence, what you're doing is you're shifting, this is what it looks like, shifting some of those smaller contracts into that category. So, instead of looking at each of those individually on here, we are looking at, on our report, it would be, instead of contracts $5,000 and under, it would be contracts $25,000 and under. Is that correct?
That's correct. The Board would still see the contracts. It would be ratified by the Board. And again, for your comfort, we felt like we needed to provide additional information that Krista mentioned. So, again, trying to get a sense of where the Board's comfort level is on what that threshold, yep.
I just want to follow up with, help me understand, okay, when you say "ratify," and when you've described your process, it sounds like you've already approved that internally, but you're just asking us to put our rubber stamp on it or approve it at this level at the Board meeting? That's how it seems, but tell me more.
Well, yeah, that is actually accurate. What we've done is, it's gone through our checks and balances. We've reviewed the contract. We've asked the right questions for the purchasing procedures to make sure that those have been followed. If they haven't, then obviously, it's a red flag, not a red flag, but a stop sign, and we say, "No, this has got to go through the bidding process." So, by having all contracts come through purchasing, it's, you know, catching those things, but it's not, it's still the same amount of work for us either way, because whether it's a contract for $0, we look at those the same way that we do for any amount. And sometimes, you know, we get pushed back, and they're like, "Well, this is $0, but, you know, why are we being so insistent on some of this language?" You know, governing law and indemnification and so on and so forth. And it's because, you know, it is a contract, and we treat them all the same through the purchasing process, and I think more of a benefit would be on the side of staff and in administration and also project managers, so that, you know, it's an extra step that they're not doing with the Board Packet, but we are still vetting it, and it's still going through that same entire process. But we are still vetting it and it's still going through that same entire process. It's just going to be shifted to a different list.
Right, so we can be assured that you're still going through all the same processes that you normally go through and that all of that's been vetted before it comes to us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing I'd add to that, Vice President Fritchy, is that, you know, one of the things that we've shifted over the last couple of years is the Thursday update and tried to be more detailed in the work as it's happening. So again, you know, hopefully there will be no surprises moving forward, and that would be the intent, so.
Board Member Hedrick?
I agree with Board Member Don that that's a big shift from 5 to 25,000. So I guess my question would be, have you done any analysis in terms of how many contracts would fall into different kind of buckets in terms of amounts that we could kind of hit the best spot? That would make, you know, that would really help on the operational piece, but then also not to that degree in terms of value, if that makes any sense.
I will say that we have taken a look at that. We are in the process of doing a spreadsheet on that very thing. Unfortunately, we were not able to get that, provide that information to you tonight, but we will definitely make sure that you all have that so that, you know, you can make a more informed decision. But definitely that is something that, you know, kicked this off initially. That was one of the reasons. And, you know, just making sure that, you know, if we do this, where's the work, where's it shifting to and where's it going and how is that going to affect everything? So we will definitely get that to you as soon as possible.
I would definitely like to see that before we set those amounts.
Any other questions?
I just have one. In terms of process flow, when we're getting these contracts and bids and trying to go through purchasing, are there times that it is impacting, like is impacting staff from getting materials, resources, or anything else that they would need as a result of a $6,000 or $7,000 contract that doesn't get approved because it has to come to us first that they would have needed actually a few weeks ago? And I'm not saying they're not planning ahead, I'm saying is there just a true process flow impact to that?
Yes, there absolutely is. It seems to be that middle range that you're speaking of, the six, seven, eight, $9,000 contracts, that it seems that those, or those bids are being mired down just a little bit and hence another reason for the change. It just seems to be that there's kind of like a little bit of a bottleneck right there. And this would definitely help if we could make a switch.
And can you give a quick, what's the total amount of time from a plan ahead standpoint that people would have to submit currently a contract to us? By the time we ratify it, it flips around, they get assigned paperwork ordered and it arrives so that they could actually use it? What would be a typical timeframe?
It depends on when it's submitted to us. If it's close to a board meeting, there's obviously a deadline that we just have to say, I'm sorry, it's going to have to wait till the next month. That is, you know, sometimes we have to make exceptions on that. We have to push something through or we have to bring it to you in an update or, you know, just kind of, you know, look for guidance on that and say, hey, this is the situation. What do you recommend that we do? So, you know, if the stars align perfectly and the timing was right and they got it to us like right after a board meeting, you know, they're going to have to, if it's over $5,000, they're going to have to wait for that next board meeting for the approval because nothing goes forward, no purchases are made, contract is not signed until we get the okay from you. And then the very next day after a board meeting is a flurry of activity because we sign all of those contracts and then we get them back to everyone.
And then my last question, I'll get to you, Board Member Allen, just a second, would be, what's the, I know that there's varying ranges throughout the region. What are some of the most common thresholds that we see throughout the region from these districts?
Well, glad you asked.
Well, thanks.
We had some old polling data on that, and then we also checked with a few of our districts that are close by. And I would say honestly, currently, we are right smack dab in the middle as far as our thresholds go. And then recently, as of this afternoon, we reached out to a couple of others and I don't remember, it was at Park Hill? Park Hill is at 25,000?
Blue Springs and Raytown are 15.
Blue Springs and Raytown are 15.
That's good enough. Board Member Allen?
Thank you, sir. Ms. Batangley, just a quick question. Was some of this examined recently just because of the pandemic situation or the urgency to have to turn so quickly or pivot? I mean, or has this kind of been brewing over time?
I would say it's been growing over time, and we did back in 2018, talk, present to the board about raising those thresholds. Timing was not right. Fast forward, now we have a pandemic, and yes, that definitely did bring it up again. Just for consideration because, you know, it has been, I mean, under normal circumstances, you know, sometimes there's a bottleneck, but definitely with the COVID situation, you know, it did bring it back up.
Sure, sure. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you for your consideration. We'll be sure to get to you that information you're looking for.
Okay. Thank you both, we appreciate it. We're going to move on to item 2.02. This is the resolution surrounding isolation, quarantining, telecommuting and things like that for our staff due to COVID-19 issues. So I'm going to let Dr. Buck kick this off, and then as we discuss, there'll be some other people that will get involved in the discussion.
Yeah, so I'm going to have in a minute, but now Dr. Del Sim's going to lead you through some things on the screen, but we've been working on this for a month and a half and been talking about longer than that. So I thank Legal for helping us out and the entire SL team. As we've obviously lived during COVID times, sometimes people have close contact just because they're doing their job. So we don't want that to impact their leave and also give them the ability to work when we can have them work remotely. So thank you to everybody who's been involved with it, and Dr. Del Sim will lead you through this. So this would be not only going forward, but retroactive to the beginning of the fiscal year.
Good evening, everyone. And as Dr. Buck said, it's really been a team effort here. I'm excited to have the opportunity to visit with you just a moment about it because really this effort began early on. It's taken a team, and it's all about our kids. And this resolution brings us to all of our employees instead of just working with our teachers, which is the first opportunity we had to work with. But this resolution gets our teachers working with our kids and all of our employees in some effect back to work during this unique time that we're all in. So as we look at some of the highlights, and Dr. Buck has asked me to speak to this, however, I have a team here that helped develop this. So we have Joe Hatley here and then our SLT team who can help out. This resolution before you, as I said, is for all of our employees. It would be specific to COVID-related symptoms. If an employee would be having those symptoms, they would go out to be tested, and then during that time, they would be taking PTO or PDO until they had that positive test. As Dr. Buck mentioned, it would be retroactive in the resolution back to July 1st, which would be the fiscal year. And that would apply to the covered employees as stated in the resolution. And you might note that the FF-CRA, as we've mentioned throughout this school year, it does expire December 31st unless the federal government decides to do something else at that time. What other information can I give you about the resolution at this time?
Board Member Fritchy?
Yes, I'm looking at the description in the packet right now. You said, as you said, this reads, because everybody out there in TV land is not seeing how it reads, the resolution's generic in terms of scope, so it applies to all employees, like you said. So you said if they went out for a COVID test and they have to stay away, they have to take a PDO. Is that correct?
Correct, because what we would be doing is awaiting that information.
Right, so you said if they come back with a positive, then basically we reinstate that day, that PDO to them? Is that correct?
It would be retroactive.
Okay, but what if they come back with a negative and we've made them go out and take a test?
And the, and those negative, well, they were exhibiting symptoms. So if it would be flu-like or allergies, then the resolution would not apply to that.
Okay, so this is strictly for COVID, it's not for other things like that? Okay, so that's a good clarification. And so the other, the other question I had in this description, it uses the, in quotes, "covered employee."
I think the one thing I would clarify with that, unless they're quarantined, in a quarantine situation.
Okay, so if they have to be in a quarantine situation, those PDOS are reinstated?
And the resolution speaks to that.
Okay, okay. Thanks. I just want to be clear. Because there's so much confusion, you understand, out there. We have received so many emails about that from staff to trying to figure out, well, these people had to take PDOS and these people didn't have to take PDOS, and why does it apply one way to one person and another? So I think it just would be so helpful if we had a user-friendly document or a chart, because you've got your chart, because when you guys explained this back in August, you know, oh, here's the chart. Well, I'm sorry, but maybe I'm stupid, but I couldn't even make sense of the chart, you know? So when people would email us, I didn't know what to tell them because I'm not an expert on that chart. You guys are the experts, so I would say you need to check with HR.
That's a good response. We do, we have the COVID leave chart, yes.
Okay.
If you look at number three, basically if you have a, if you have a fever and you go, decide to go get a test, and it turns out you're negative, you're just sick. And so that's what PDO and PTOs are for. But if you have COVID, we're saying we're going to cover you. Probably the bigger thing we're running into is that we have quarantine situations. And so maybe you're a paraprofessional and you're helping out a student and the student had a positive test, you're asymptomatic, but you're told you have to quarantine for 14 days. So now you won't use any PDO for that. So if I had a fever and Ryan and I were too close together and it turned out I had COVID and Ryan had to quarantine, it covers his days, it covers my days for having COVID. If I just have a fever and it turns out I don't have COVID, then it does, this does not impact at all, instead I'd have my PDOS.
Thank you.
Board Member Marshall?
So while the employee is awaiting the results of their test, are they still afforded the opportunity to do some type of work from home, maybe to mitigate taking time off? That maybe they can be, you know, they can do something administrative-wise, maybe support another teacher in their, in their grade pod or something like that? If they're able to, of course, depending on their symptoms?
Go ahead, Dr. Buck, you look like you were going to answer it.
Well, no, that's one of the intents we're looking at in here, and so I might want to bring Joe up here as well. The intent was also with this to look at if there is work you can do, your supervisor signs off, you might be able to do some remote work in different situations. So I'll let Joe Hatley answer to those.
Yeah, I don't think that, that specific question's covered in this, and we could certainly change it up to account for that, but I think the premise was if somebody's showing symptoms, we want to give them an incentive to go get tested as soon as possible. So thus the, we're going to use PDO or PTO for that time. Typically, if somebody's on PDO or PTO, they're not asked to work because they're unable to. Now, we could modify this, I suppose, to say if somebody's awaiting the results of a test, they could be asked to do work. But where this kicks in is if somebody, once they become a covered employee, because they've got a positive test, but they're able to work or they're quarantined, but they're feeling fine. The other parts of the resolution require them to do as much work as they possibly can while they're in that situation. They'll get assigned work by their supervisor, but it doesn't, it doesn't actually cover the specific situation you're, you're talking about because if somebody's showing symptoms, they may be sick anyway and we don't ask people to work, but we do assess PTO under those circumstances.
Okay. I think it would be a good idea to add something, you know, just to give the, the teachers the option depending on their capabilities. Some may be very sick and they just can't get out of bed, and others, you know, they can do something, so.
And I will say, so number four, you're seeing what you're talking about. If it turns out they have positive COVID tests, we backtrack to when they started missing for that symptom.
Yeah, and I, just to be clear on the first question, I don't, I didn't, we don't have anything in here right now about reinstating the PDO days for that period of time between when you show symptoms and you get your test. That's something, what we are reinstating are people who would have been under this over the last, are we five, four months now, five months? If you would have been a covered employee under this and say you had to quarantine in September and you were assessed PDO, but you would otherwise fall within that, those days get reinstated. But, but the incentive is to get that test as soon as you can, and that's why we are saying use your PDO until you get that test result back so that people don't delay in doing that. We want to incentivize people to get that taken care of.
Just to clarify then, before we get to other questions for everybody, just so we clarify, so anytime, even those who have taken tests previously and those now who are taking tests and are taking a PDO, awaiting results, those days will not be reimbursed under the way the resolution reads right now. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would encourage us as a board to think about that one because, especially as turnaround times continue to really waffle across the region, that I think we really need to think about that one.
And once we get the antigen test, we can take care of that very fast here at site, but right now we don't have that yet. So I agree, it's going to be a short-term issue, but I thought that was what number three was kind of saying, so.
And just a quick question then, I'm just thinking out loud. If, if we're going to reinstate the days regardless of the test result, okay, okay.
Positive, positive test results reinstated. Right.
Okay.
That way the wording, I think, stays consistent throughout, throughout the resolution too.
Okay.
Board Member Marshall, did you have anything else on that one that you wanted to comment on before we?
No, I think, I think you covered it.
So just, just to be clear, like you said, the incentive is for that, that employee to get the test. So the moment they're exhibiting symptoms, from that moment until when they actually take that test, that is time that they will have to use their time off. That will not be reinstated.
It would be if they get, if we revise it and the test comes back.
It would be reinstated.
If the test comes back.
Okay, then whatever happens from the result of that test forward, they would be allowed to do work, situation dictating, if they're able.
If they test, if they test positive, but they're able to do work, say they're asymptomatic.
Right, positive or negative, maybe they're negative and they still have to quarantine.
Well, if they're negative, if they're negative, they don't have the disease, and as Dr. Buck said, that's just regular sick leave if they're not feeling like they can work.
So this is only covering those who are required to take a test, not anyone that's under quarantine because they've come in contact?
Quarantined also.
Okay, okay.
And that was something that Board Member Fritchy and I were just mentioning, you know, an exposure, even that person who's going to get, taking a test, if they had exposure, they're going to be required to quarantine anyway. And so they're going to get those days covered anyway under this particular resolution. So they have kind of a double incentive right there, for lack of a better term, so.
Board Member Allen?
Thanks, President. I don't, Joe or whomever, and maybe this isn't necessary, but let's say we're back a year before, a year from now back, right? Rewind the clock a little bit, and someone's out for the allergy-type symptoms, the flu-type symptoms. What was the process at that point? Does that, would that person be taking PTO, PDOS off like automatically because they have a temperature or they make that choice or what? Because I don't want to just sort of, you know, totally. Because I don't want to just sort of, you know, totally sideline that and all of a sudden somebody's feeling a, you know, allergy, flu or what have you. Well, you got to go test it. We don't have it, but you still have flu-like symptoms. Well, I could have, otherwise I might have stayed here and taught or otherwise I may have put up with the allergy and stayed and not burned my PDO or PTO. Am I making sense with?
Yeah, you are, but I, I would like, first of all, from what I, I'm obviously not a doctor. But the symptoms are somewhat similar, flu-like symptoms, COVID. So if you've got flu-like symptoms, you're probably going to go get that test. And irrespective of whether you think it's COVID or not, if you think you have the flu, we don't want you in the school anyway. So.
So, but I guess my question goes back to a year ago, you know, and we're in different times. You can't really put toothpaste back in the bottle. But if I'm teaching in 2019 at this time and I have allergy or flu or a temperature, am I sent home and I have to burn PTO, PDO? Yes? Okay, everybody's saying yes. So we're not shifting that practice at all. Okay.
This is a unique resolution for a unique time.
Yep, yep, I got it.
And the board has the authority. Two things we put in here in paragraph nine, the board can change this anytime it wants at its sole discretion. And there's also a requirement in here for monthly reports to the board from administration on the fiscal impact of this. Because this could, you know, if this starts to become a real monster, you're going to get data every month so that you'll be able to decide if you need to adjust this resolution in some way.
Thank you, Mr. Hatley.
Board Member Doan?
Once we settle on this resolution, will all staff get this resolution to read? So they have information? Right, so after it's all good and?
It would be here housed on board docs that anybody could, would be able to.
I just think this should actually be sent to each one of our staff.
We certainly can do that.
And then Ms. Bergen puts it in the update, so.
I just, seven times and then I'll, it'll sink in. Thank you.
Board Member Hedrick?
Well, I would say that, you know, communication to our staff is going to need to wordsmith some of this because this is going to be confusing for our staff. So if we think we're going to provide this and they're going to understand what, what the resolution says, I think that's, that's wishful thinking. But my, my question really is around just the point, Joe, that you just made in terms of, have we done any analysis in terms of what financially this is going to cost? How many PTO, PDOs we're going to be giving back at this point? And then what about those people who've been docked pay? And so what the, what the dollar figure of any of that is?
You know, I had a bit of a crystal ball, Dr. Hedrick.
I'd, I'd ask a financial question, huh?
And I started working with Mr. Williams and his team on that. We've had 46 employees completely exhaust their CARES Act, which is that first 10 days, right? That we've been allowed to use. So they're at the end of that and eclipsed it. So they would be in a bit of a pickle right, right now. And then within that, we've had some employees use a variety of CARES Act. So nine days, eight days, seven days, some just one day. Within that 46, then, we've had about half of those go into their own PDO days for a variety of reasons. I have not been able to scrub that for as much detail. Some of it has been, they've gone into then the EPSL leave, which is the next layer of federal leave that's been allowed. So I would have to give you a deeper scrub on that. And then we have not done a financial cost along with that because each employee, the wage, of course, would be different and the rate. I think all we could really provide is maybe a global price until we can give something a deeper detail. Our payroll team and benefits team is consumed right now with benefits enrollment. So I was thrilled they could at least give me that much.
And when we do that financial impact, obviously we won't really know it until the end of the year when you have PDO buyback. Because you may have protected it now, but maybe you get the flu in February and you use up all your PDO. So really there is no financial impact because nobody's getting PDO buyback. So it's going to be kind of a guess of, hey, if they don't use their PDO for other things, we protect the test, they could get buyback, what would the cost be?
Additionally, some of that's one-on-one conversations as to why they use those additional days, so.
Board Member Fritchy?
Yes, I had the opportunity today to watch a particular video from the superintendent from Fort Zumwalt. It was sent to me by somebody. And one thing, it was a 20-minute discussion that one of their local news stations did with the superintendent. I thought that was great. It was just a really informative piece, I thought. That sure would be nice if one of our local news stations would, you know, would do that too. Just, just an informative piece, you know? But at any rate, what they, one of the items that I found really interesting was that he was talking about how the teachers who were on their leave because of COVID or being quarantined, when they were on that leave and they're telecommuting, they are actually, what they're doing is they're, they're actually able to teach from home into their classroom, their physical classroom, and just hire a substitute to be in that room with the kids physically. So the kids are still getting all of that quality instruction that they need to get instead of just a, you know, a busy work lesson plan or something for a substitute to follow. So I was wondering if that's our plan or what do we plan to do there?
After this is approved in some form later tonight, assuming that it is, we could do that. It will be a communication between the supervisor and that teacher because obviously if they're too sick to do that, we don't want them. But if they're able and willing, then we do want to do that. So, because we're already paying for a sub to come in while they're quarantined or they're isolating. So, and I think you will see some of that. But again, it's going to be an individual conversation between supervisor and, and staff member in that situation. And it's beyond just teaching because other positions as well may be able to, because this is all staff, not just teaching. All staff, there will be many chances where we could do that. It's going to be hard to drive a bus virtually, but there's a lot of jobs we can do virtually.
Part of the discussion, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, we had the discussion about that if a room already had a para-professional, that it might be, might be possible, right, for the para to be in with the room and we even avoid the sub-cost at that particular time. And the teacher still is teaching and if they're, all those kinds of things. Am I remembering that correctly?
As long as they have a sub-statement, yes, which is some of our para-professionals.
Sorry, yes, I should have mentioned that. Right, yeah, okay. Board Member Allen?
I just wanted to state that, Joe Hatley or Dr. Buck, any of this team, thank you for digging into this as strongly as you can. I, I agree with the wordsmithing piece and delivering this information as aggressively as we can so that everybody is very knowledgeable of what this says. So, thanks.
Board Member Marshall?
Under the, under the definition for covered employee, I'm trying to find where would describe a situation where a teacher is not COVID-positive. However, they are a parent to a student in the district and now they have to be home with their child who has either been exposed or tested positive because that, that teacher is a parent as well. How does, how does this overlap that?
Well, I, I would take it one step, but that just from my county, from working in, in that particular situation, typically the parent is being asked to quarantine anyway because of the close family exposure. And so they, they've been treating it as a family exposure and so that person is required to quarantine and then they would fall under the quarantine here. Unless I am reading that incorrectly.
So is it any, sorry, is it?
Well, first, I, I didn't mean to cut you off, Board Member. Did you have a follow-up? Because I, I may not have completely answered that.
No, that was, that was the question. How would, if, if a teacher was, or staff was in that situation, how would, I mean, would they be assumed to just take, pay, pay time off or I know they would be.
Right, and the only thing, yeah, and the only thing I would say on that is like, and again, feel free anybody to jump in, is if their student was, had an exposure but wasn't a positive case, that's going to be a secondary issue and that, I, I do not read it as being covered under this. So if they're having to stay home because their kid is home due to exposure, that's going to be separate from this particular resolution. Am I, am I missing?
That's correct. So secondary exposures are not quarantined.
My turn. Okay, so let me ask this question. What if I'm an employee and I'm exposed to someone over the weekend who is COVID-positive and I need to quarantine for that? Am I covered?
We are saying yes now. That was what we wrestled with. We were trying to get this to you in September. Originally, we tried to look at exposures you had at school, but as we've lived contact tracing now for a couple of months, sometimes that's hard to tell where you're quarantined from because you may have bumped into the same person at dinner as you did at school. And then, so what do you call that? So we, we've had a couple incidents of that. We've had a couple incidents of, of kids where, you know, we had an incident where they had a sleepover and they were together on our campus. So what do you call that? So it's just not black and white in all situations. We'd love it to be. So we ended up saying, hey, this is about public safety, so let's just go with all quarantine and isolations.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions on this one? I think I would just ask a kind of a follow-up to Board Member Marshall's question in terms of the secondary exposure issue that if it's a young kid that ends up getting put at home and we know the family member is now going to be in close contact with that particular, is that something we may need to consider here as, as we go forward? And I mean, based on this resolution, we could amend it, right, if we had to, go, if, if that situation were to arise, is that?
If, yeah, if, if that starts becoming an issue, you always have the authority to amend this. And in that circumstance, you know, the, the, one of the criteria is if you're quarantined on the advice of a healthcare provider. So if you go to your doctor and the doctor says, you need to quarantine, bring us the note on that and you're covered by this.
Okay, okay. That does help. I appreciate that. Any other questions regarding this particular resolution? Okay, thank you, Joe. Yes?
I'll make the revision on this to deal with the positive test.
To have it in for, for the main meeting.
Get that to Linda so that that can be in your board docs.
Appreciate that. Dr. Buck, if it's okay with you, we might push the book to next month to give board members just enough time to eat dinner before we come back for the 7 o'clock meeting. Are you okay with that?
Most certainly.
Okay, so this adjourns the work session. Thank you all.